Okay, that's mine again. Hang on.
Laura's here.
Oh, Laura's online. Very good.
Oh, I thought this was a virtual-only meeting. My bad. That's what it says on the website.
Is that... oh. We've had confusion in that regard. So, just to be clear, we are both in chambers and online today. The Thursday meeting is council's meeting, and that's not to be confused with August 22's joint-meeting Planning Board and Council. So, just if you were like Emel, planning on showing up somewhere, either online or in person, this coming Thursday, you don't need to do that. Okay. So, I am going to call the July 23rd here in Boulder, Colorado, Planning Board meeting to order. Are we recording?
Yes, we are.
And we're recording. All right. We have no minutes to approve or any other business to proceed with other than public comment. And so, Vivian, I'm not expecting a lot, but I guess we have to go through everything. So, would you please go through the rules of engagement for public comment?
I will, and Thomas is just pulling them up. You don't have too many people from the public with us, but I will go ahead and read them. Next slide, please. So, I'll read off these rules or guidelines for public participation in our meetings. And just letting you know that the city has worked with the community to develop a vision for productive, we call it productive atmospheres for meetings. And this vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and board members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. And we have a lot more information about this on our website. Next slide, please. And the following are examples of rules of deform found in the Boulder Vice Code and other guidelines that support this productive atmospheres vision. And these will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupt or otherwise impede the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And participants are required to identify themselves by their first and last name so we can call on you. Next slide, please. And if members of public would like to speak during public open comment or public hearing, I think we don't have a public hearing today, you raise your virtual hand. Look for the hand icon and click on that, and we'll know that you would like to speak and call on you by your first and last name. And if you're joining by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing start. And this just shows another way to get to the hand icon. So, let's see if we have any hands raised. If anybody would like to speak during open comment, which is an opportunity to address the board on any items not on the agenda. This is the time to do so. Give it a few awkward seconds, just to make sure, and I think we're okay. So, back over to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. So, we have no minutes to approve, no discussion of dispositions or call-up items, no public hearing items. So, we move on to item six, Matters from the Planning Board, Planning Director and City Attorney under Matters 6A, Training and Pre-Update Overview of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Or, we're fixing to get ready to start thinking about doing something with this. So, I'm going to turn this over to staff.
Thank you. My name is Chris Rangelos. I'm a senior planner in comprehensive planning. And sitting next to me this evening is Tess Shorn, who's a city planner in comprehensive planning as well. I also want to acknowledge Tucker Horsh, who's in the audience with us tonight. He's our comprehensive planning intern. He's been with us for about two months now and has done a really great job providing some overview and some assessment of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan and beginning to do some analysis for us. And... Get the presentation. One second. Okay. And again, this is an opportunity for our staff to share a bit of an overview of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. And our goal is to help develop a foundational understanding of the BVCP, its intent, components, and share a bit of its history prior to the official kickoff of the 2025 major update later this fall. Our staff will be back on August 22nd for a joint session with City Council and Planning Board to share out and seek feedback on the draft scope, schedule, and community engagement plan. Provide a quick rundown of the agenda. We'll talk a little bit about what comprehensive plans are, what Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan is, some of the key history and key milestones throughout our process, and preview a little bit of what we can expect the process and next steps to be. And we'll start really here with Colorado state regulations, just to point out that the state of Colorado does require the adoption of a comprehensive plan for any municipality with a population over 2,000, which we are well over. It encourages that the principal purpose is to be a guide for the achievement of community goals. And planned elements that address recreation and tourism, water supply, including water conservation and strategic growth are required by state statutes. But what is a comprehensive plan, just generally speaking? A comprehensive plan is a high-level visionary plan to help guide a city's future. These plans are based on longstanding community values, and they help guide how the city will grow into the future. They typically include topics such as land use, transportation, and parks and open space, though as you'll see with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, this is not an exhaustive list. So, philosophically speaking, we develop and maintain comprehensive plans to set aspirational goals for a desired future with at least a 15-year timeframe or 15-year time horizon. And I'll point out that this may look different in some communities. For us, it's 15 years, while others may be looking at a 20- or a 30-year time horizon. They're meant to weigh trade-offs and make difficult decisions, be deliberate and intentional about how we grow and tackle new and emerging needs, such as sustainability, equity, and resilience in our community. They provide a unifying framework, a policy framework of which key decisions in our community can be weighed against. We want our community to shape its future. It's very much of a community-driven plan. It presents an opportunity to come together as one Boulder, to make tough and important decisions, be deliberate about our future, and hopefully achieve the intended outcomes that we, as a community, collectively hope to achieve. And what a comprehensive plan is not. A comprehensive plan is not intended to be a fine-grained regulatory document. That fine-grained level of detailed planning and regulatory items are achieved in small area or sub-community plans and through zoning and municipal codes. And with this type of plan, again, we really are at that 30,000-foot view, a very visionary and aspirational document. And jumping into Boulder Valley's comprehensive plan here a little bit, or the BVCP, as you will often hear it referred to as, this is the jointly adopted and governing long-range planning document for the Boulder Valley, which includes both the city of Boulder and land in unincorporated Boulder County. It guides long-range planning decisions on growth, the built natural environment, transportation, climate, economy, housing, and community well-being and safety. In terms of the overall structure within our city organization, the BVCP is aligned with and informed by the Sustainability, Equity, and Resilience Framework. It also informs the citywide strategic plan. It sets the broader policy goals that are often distilled into action-based regulatory documents, like our sub-community and area plans, department plans, citywide strategies, development standards, and zoning, and also influences budgeting and resourcing across the organization, including within the city's annual capital improvement program and the operating budget. And I do want to point out here that Boulder County does have their own comprehensive plan as well, the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan, which is very well-aligned to that of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. And it governs all unincorporated lands outside of the Boulder Valley. The city and county have a longstanding tradition of working together. And really, this is since the inception of the first Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan in 1977, which was created centered around guiding growth in a positive way throughout the Boulder Valley. The 1977 plan is also when the city and county entered into the intergovernmental agreement, which stipulates that both the city and county would follow the plan, the land use map, as well as the policies regarding utility provision and new urban development. And this was intended to only occur in areas with the full range of urban services. Since then, there's been a fairly consistent framework, vision, and values around growth management in Boulder and urban service provision. While the framework and vision for guiding growth in the Boulder Valley has remained stable for 50 years, the plan's policies, its procedures, have certainly evolved. And it is important to note, as you'll see, within the BVCP, there are city-specific policies where it says "the city shall" versus "the city and county shall." And so, those policies that say "the city shall" only apply to the city, whereas policies that mention both the city and county apply to both the city and county. I will also point out that the approval of the BVCP is a four-body decision, including those bodies you see on this slide, meaning that both the city and county only to work together and ultimately approve the same plan. I'll spend a little bit of time on this slide, as it is an important one. But we'll start to walk through some of the components of our current Boulder Valley Comp Plan. And we'll start with the Service Area Framework, or the Area 1, 2, and 3 Planning Areas, as it is often referred to as. And again, this is the framework as a result of the 1977 Boulder Valley Comp Plan, which sought to establish a new intergovernmental tool between the city and county to help guide growth in the Boulder Valley. And essentially, this framework sets the standard and expectation that urban development only occur in areas that are served by urban services, while allowing the remaining areas of the Boulder Valley to remain rural. It was established for a couple of different reasons. It was established to limit sprawl, preserve the rural buffer between the city and adjacent communities, to maintain a well-defined city edge, to prevent patterns of leapfrog development, and ultimately, to maintain the compact nature of our community. So, looking at the colors on the map here, Area 1 is going to be most of the yellow that you see. And this is the city limits proper, which has adequate urban facilities and services. Again, this is where we want urban development to occur. Area 2 is the gray, sort of the gray fringe areas you see around the city. And these are areas that are now under county jurisdiction, where annexation into the city is anticipated so long as that growth is consistent with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. And it's important to note that both Area 1 and 2 together make up the Service Area, another term you may hear referenced often. And then moving on to Area 3, Area 3 is most of the green that you see. And it is the remaining area within the Boulder Valley, generally under county jurisdiction, and is intended to remain rural without urban facilities and services. And it's important to distinguish that Area 3 is divided into two areas. The Area 3 Rural Preservation Area, this is most of the green that you see on the slide. And this is where the city and county intend to preserve existing rural land uses and character. And then the Area 3 Planning Reserve, which is a little bit hard to see, but it's the lighter green, sort of blob just to the north of town. And this is where the city and county intend to maintain the option of future service area expansion. And as you know, city staff are currently preparing the Urban Services Study, which is the first step of evaluating whether expansion into the Planning Reserve is feasible and should be considered. So, highlighting some of our urban services, this is the full range of urban services and standards that we define to serve urban development, which is defined in the BVCP. The city is the preferred provider of these urban services, and these standards are intended to be minimum requirements or thresholds for services that must be delivered to existing urban development, new development, and for redevelopment to be considered adequate. Jumping to the land use map. The land use map describes future land uses and character that help to shape development and redevelopment by establishing aspirational and broad future land use patterns throughout the Boulder Valley. Our land use designations describe the characteristics, locations, and uses for each category in the BVCP. And we currently utilize land use designations under a couple of different categories, five of them residential, industrial, business, open space, and other. And I will point out that there are 26 different land use designations within these categories. And I think it's important to be able to distinguish between land use and zoning, which are oftentimes confused as they may appear very similar on paper. Essentially, land use is visionary, it's forward-looking, and aspirational in nature. It describes the community's vision and desired uses across the Boulder Valley. And it may or may not be the same use than the existing use that is there today. And finally, the land use map informs future zoning and rezoning decisions in order to bring both land use and zoning into alignment. And for zoning, on the other hand, this is a legal property right. It sets more specific development-related standards than land use does. It includes regulations around allowed uses, building form, and intensity of development. But the two do need to speak to one another. So, to use a metaphor, one way I like to think about this is to think of a birthday cake. Land use describes the desired cake, like a chocolate cake, whereas zoning is the recipe, right, that we need to follow in order to make that chocolate cake. If we don't get the recipe or the zoning right to match that chocolate cake or the land use, then we may end up with a cake that we didn't intend to make. I'll touch briefly on sub-community and area planning. The city's broken down into 10 geographic sub-communities that provide a more focused area of study and provides a framework for managing change and implementing the BVCP policy at a more local level within the city. This essentially helps translate large-scale planning ideas expressed in the BVCP to a more localized and human scale. Adopted sub-community plans consist of the North Boulder Sub-Community Plan and the most recently approved East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. And examples of the most recently adopted area plans in the city include the Transa Village Area Plan for the Boulder Junction area, as well as the Alpine-Balsam Area Plan for the former BCH site in future Western City campus. And all sub-communion area plans are influenced by the policies that are established within the BVCP and are one of the key implementation tools in realizing its vision. And I want to point out that a key culture of the BVCP is that we regularly update it. It's not a plan that gets written, sits on a shelf, collects dust, and then completely rewritten. Our BVCP is a living vision document for our city and continues to evolve and change with the changing needs of our community. Since the 1977 Boulder Valley Comp Plan, we've had seven major updates since, on an established, regular schedule to ensure that the vision and needs of our community continue to be met. It's reviewed every five years for possible amendments to reflect changes in circumstances and community desires, with major updates happening every 10 years. With the most recent update occurring in 2015, it's been 10 years now. So, we'll, as we've mentioned, be kicking off the major update of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan here this fall, which Tess is going to provide a little bit more information on shortly after discussing some of our key planning milestones.
Hello, everyone. My name's Tess Shorn, and I'm going to talk to you first a little bit about the history pre-1977, the first Comp Plan that kind of led to our growth management in these plans. So, since 1977, Boulder Valley has undoubtedly changed. But two important factors that shaped the urban form of Boulder are its mountain backdrop and surrounding open space. Boulder's distinctive sense of place and compact size did not happen by accident, and I will be sharing some history about this. So, in talking about history, we must first acknowledge that the city of Boulder is on the ancestral homelands and unceded territory of indigenous peoples who have traversed, lived, and stewarded lands in the Boulder Valley since time immemorial. These indigenous nations include the Apache, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Comanche, Hiwa, Pawnee, Shoshone, Sioux, and Yoot. We honor and respect the people of these nations and their ancestors. The city of Boulder also recognizes that those now living and working on these ancestral lands have a responsibility to acknowledge and address that past. The city refutes past justifications for colonialization of indigenous lands and acknowledges a legacy of oppression that has caused intergenerational trauma to indigenous peoples and family. Boulder began as a small-minded town in more recent history and then grew slowly, opening the University of Colorado in 1877, and for a long time after that, remained a small college town. However, between 1950 and 1970, Boulder's population more than tripled, growing from around 20,000 to almost 67,000. Because of this rapid population growth, community members grew concerned about sprawl continuing into the mountains. So, in 1959, the Blue Line was added to the city charter as a tool to limit that sprawl. It restricts city water and sewer services on the west edge of the city. On the heels of the institution of this Blue Line, the Boulder community sought to preserve open space lands around the entire city. And in 1967, Boulder became the first city in the nation to institute a dedicated sales tax to purchase open space lands. This approach to growth management and rural land preservation was further defined with the adoption of the service areas that Chris had previously talked about in the City and County 1977 Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. And this has been the fundamental framework for focusing growth within city limits ever since. The impacts can be seen here as the city-owned open space has been purchased over the last 50 years. You can see that there's quite a bit more open space than there was in 1967. So, while the community members were concerned about this growing outward during this time, they were also concerned about growing upward. A few development proposals were submitted that included 100-foot-tall buildings, and community members were worried about preserving views of the mountains and kind of preserving Boulder's small-town character. So, voters passed a change to the city's charter to institute a 55-foot height limit in 1971. Based, and this height limit was based upon the height of a mature cottonwood tree. Again, since the '70s, much of the city's growth management has occurred through the BVCP. But this is the past that kind of led us to the first BVCP. So, now I'm going to move on to the 2015 major update, which was our most recent major update, and kind of give you a general overview of what can be found in that update. So, the Boulder Valley vision of 2015 was "The community honors its history and legacy of planning for a livable community surrounded by open space and rural lands while striving together to create and preserve a truly special place that is sustainable, resilient, equitable, and inclusive, now and for generations to come." And you can see there's still kind of that character of wanting to preserve the open space surrounded by a compact city in this vision statement. The culmination of a community process in 2015 led to seven focus areas. And these focus areas, I just want to note, can be subject to change moving forward in this 2025 major update. These seven focus areas include housing affordability and diversity, growth, place design quality and placemaking, small local businesses, resiliency and climate commitment, sub-communities and area planning, and arts and culture. The 2015 major update also had policies which were organized into these topic areas. And each of these topic areas has quite a few policies within them. And policies function and overlap. Not one single policy is currently prioritized over another. So, all policies are weighed carefully and trade-off choices are considered kind of when that's necessary. And as a reminder, some policies are specific to the city and some apply to the city and county. And this reinforces the value of a joint adoption with the four-body review process. Now, moving on to the exciting new update, 2025, which you'll hear a lot more about in August, but we'll just give you a brief overview. So, what you can expect during a major update, there's a lot of changes and edits allowed, which includes changes to pretty much all of our maps. We can change any of our policies, criteria for urban service standards, et cetera. We will be kicking off this major update later this fall publicly. And because so much can be changed and adjusted during a major update, I want to reiterate that the BVCP is a reflection of our community, who we are and who we want to be in the future. A plan of this magnitude and importance to the community requires a lot of time with the community, which we will anticipate spending nearly all of 2025 doing. We'll be engaged in conversation with our community to answer many key questions and decide what our vision for the next 20 years is. We hope to proceed with a draft plan and hold public hearings for the adoption in mid to late 2026. Speaking of community engagement, we'll be sharing our overall engagement strategy and more details with you in August. And we plan to engage the community in a variety of ways. Today, we just want to highlight one of our plans to stand up a community assembly, which is both our greatest engagement innovation in this process and also our deepest level of engagement. There is two main components to the assembly. One, the random selection process. And two, the in-depth deliberation for the group to arrive at judgments that balance competing values, such as freedom of choice and fairness to different social groups. We have engaged a consultant to support us through the design and implementation of this. In August, we will share more details about this process. And we will ensure that the community assembly complements all our engagement strategies. And then, finally, next steps. So, as I said a couple times, August 22nd, we'll be back to share with you a scope, schedule, and engagement strategy for this 2025 major update. And then we plan on October 19th to have the community-wide kickoff of the BVCP. Thank you so much for listening.
Okay. That concludes your presentation. Thank you very much. That was really great, and I certainly learned a few things that I didn't know in that. So, that's great. So, now comes time for the Planning Board to fire away with questions. Who, let me get my, so I can see our online participants here. Hold on. Okay. Who's got some questions ready? Emel.
Thank you for that great presentation. I mean, I learned a bunch of stuff as well. We're all growing. And through the presentation, I came up with some questions that I think have, I've noticed through my work on Planning Board. So, on that diagram where you had the BVCP, the sub-community plans, and the zoning, and you had the arrows going from BVCP down to zoning, is there a process for considering the arrows going in the other direction as well?
I guess I'd throw a question back at you. And are there specific arrows that you anticipate going the other way, whether that be for sub-community and area plans or citywide strategic plan?
Well, you know, one of the things that I think is, could use more support in the Planning Board decision-making process is a relationship from the parts to the whole. And I see the BVCP's role, as I'm sure we all do, as providing the whole. And so, I think it's critical to understand how the parts make it back to the whole, because it's a very fuzzy process for us, where it's kind of like, in whole or in part, you know, you can meet the BVCP, and if you find one here and one there, you're good to go. It doesn't seem to really honor the value of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. So, I think it might behoove us to consider... So I, I think it might behoove us to consider how those specific pieces are, what they look like when they hit back at the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. And I'm thinking in particular, you know, we do area plans. And then we get projects that come to us. It's like, well, the area plan says this, that, yeah, but we would want to do this. And it seems like there really isn't a means for us to hold accountability to that intent. You know, we see the arrow going from BVCP there, but we don't see it being accountable back. So that, I don't know if that clarifies what I'm trying to say. It's like, we need a means to make ourselves accountable back to the Boulder Valley Comp Plan.
I think that's really great feedback and something that we can consider. One of the areas that I think we can improve on is developing metrics and understanding how we are implementing these plans. And that might help develop that communication back and forth. And so that's something that I think we can certainly work on and take that feedback as we embark on the 2025 update. And as we identify new sub-community and area plans to develop, as we develop those metrics, we can communicate better back out and how these plans are achieving the vision that is established within the Boulder Valley Comp Plan.
Excellent. I love that answer. Thank you very much.
Can I just add to those comments? Brad Mueller, Director, Planning and Development Services. So I think we're hearing, and you're thinking about this on different kind of levels and different contexts, which is really good. And certainly, action items for comprehensive plan are a good technique for implementation and measuring and reporting back. And I'll just share one other kind of perspective that I think is maybe different but related regarding comprehensive plans. Throughout my career, I've heard mostly criticisms, but observations of comprehensive plans as being able to say whatever somebody wants it to say. So in other words, it's kind of like, well, it's open to interpretation and it can say whatever you want it to. And my response to that, for what it's worth, has always been, that's true. It's an aspirational document, and it reflects the complexity of a society and the complexity of a community's values. But in reality, we deal with that every day with every development proposal that comes forward. And so we will see a design that comes in where the designer has already had, and you can appreciate this, already made trade-offs between access and view sheds and, you know, all these different things. It's not uncommon for us to have to reconcile competing comments. For example, you need to put in a stormwater detention pond here. Access has to be here. Well, that's the same physical location. They can't be in the same area, so we have to reconcile those. And it doesn't mean one value is wrong versus the other. It just means a judgment has to be made about how those can be accommodated. And the same is true in the comprehensive plan. There's a value that says trails are great, and there's a value that says, you know, open view sheds are great. And those may be competing at any given time when applied, because those might have to occupy the same physical space. But the quasi-judicial decision-making process, or administrative ones through rules or through discernment by the staff that we do, is designed, I would submit, to try to reconcile those competing values that are expressed in a comprehensive plan using judgment and site-specific facts. So for my part, I'm comfortable with the reality that a document that is by definition aspirational has competing values, because I think that reflects reality. And I encourage us to think about that, too. And as we talk about it with the public, to acknowledge that as well.
Thank you for that, Brad. And you remind me that planning is a dynamic, is a dynamic thing. So you're absolutely, I think, spot on. That is the challenge, in that not every context is going to translate the same information in the same way, because it, it has its own nuance. And I, and I think that that is the challenge in making steadfast regulations that also have an aspirational component to them. You know, there's kind of a contradiction there. But I think that the intent with the BVCP and its aspiration, and then the specificity of, say, a zoning, it would be nice if there was some transparency as to, okay, how, what do those dash lines look like?
Right.
And I love the idea of getting some data points in for that. I think that would be one way. Because, you know, those can be read uniquely. So, awesome.
Yeah. And again, those are great suggestions. And I'm confident we'll look into different ways to operationalize that. I will just add, too, and then apologies for the long soapbox answer. But, you know, it is very possible. This speaks again to a common criticism of people abusing, you know, the Comp Plan, quote-unquote. And it is true. A handful of times in my career, I've seen somebody stand up and say, "Well, look, you know, it says policy blah, blah, blah. That means we have to do that." But, you know, there's a whole context to the comprehensive plan, intent, and competing other considerations. And again, I would submit, that's what policymakers are by definition supposed to wrestle with and make informed judgment-based decisions. Thank you.
Kurt, if you're ready.
Sure, Brad. Can I follow up on that? Since you're talking about the policies, particularly in the context of development processes. So you gave the example of, for instance, a conflict between the need for stormwater and the need for access or something. Well, there are policies that say we need to deal with stormwater, and there are policies that say we need to have access. My question is, does having those policies in the Comp Plan actually then affect anything? In terms of, particularly when we're looking at specific developments?
Yes, I would argue they absolutely do on a couple different levels. Chris showed that chart of the relationship of the CIP and, excuse me, and the budget and the zoning code and these different things as implementation elements to a comprehensive plan. So I would say already institutionally, that's built in when you see a specific application. That is, there was a law that was adopted that was consistent with that planning policy. But the other way it comes in is when you are deliberating on, does this comply with the comprehensive plan? You know, at that point, you, you can, you can be very specific about which of those policies apply in a particular case. Now, that doesn't mean if the law says you need to have access and stormwater, you know, there's a way to not do that. You know, you have to have both. But it certainly can give guidance towards the soft aspects of planning, compatibility, walkability, intensity, aesthetics. And this is one of those things that there's a constant tension in the planning industry and community about, what are those things? What do they mean? Well, I had a lot of professors say, "They mean whatever you decide them to mean." I mean, you're making a judgment on a site-specific case that in this particular case, it is compatible. And you can lean on and cite elements of the comprehensive plan to say, "Well, this is why it is such and such." Planning at its root is not, it's not a exact science. It's not, it's not engineering. It's not, is the answer three or four? It is by design, those types of societal questions. And again, that's where the comprehensive plan gives guidance to make those judgment-based decisions. And it, and it, you know, it should help in a council member's and a planning board member's consideration of an item before, you know, before it gets heard. It certainly is a good thing to cite when making a decision. It's especially good to cite if you're denying something or going against a particular staff recommendation. We always counsel you, and Attorney's Office does, that giving a reason for it means that it will hold up in court. And those are all, you know, valid reasons. But that's a very tactical reason. The more philosophical reason that I, you know, I've always felt is important is just to know that you're making the decision based on a weighing of the values as expressed.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Maybe something to continue to discuss?
Yeah, fair enough.
I have a question, I think maybe back to Chris. A very high-level question. So back in 1977, when we started doing, or maybe this is really for tests. When we started doing the, when we, when we first did the Comp Plan, there was, that was still a time of a significant amount of expansion of the city. There was a lot of question about what should get annexed, what shouldn't. There was all this negotiation, I think, between the city and the county. That, to me, seems like it's pretty much completely over, right? We have the, the pretty definitive map, right? Shows areas 1, 2, 3. And we're still annexing some Area 2 stuff. We're not annexing in any Area 3 stuff other than possibly Area 3 Planning Reserve. There's no discussion of, of annexing anything in Area 3. That, it seems like that is, it's baked, it's, it's decided. So given that, what value is there in continuing to have this joint-city-county process, four-body review, all this kind of thing? Aren't we kind of past that stage?
I'll go ahead and start and then give it off to Chris. But I think the reason it is baked is because of this comprehensive plan and the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, because that is the regulatory document that enforces this map and enforces this to continue. And I understand that we now own a lot of the open space surrounding. But it is the document that provides this bakedness, as you're saying.
I think what I'll add to that, too, is that it's general best practice to engage in regional planning efforts. A lot of the issues that face our community in the Boulder Valley don't know jurisdictional boundaries. And so it's a partnership that we value with the county in being able to establish a really clear vision of the entire Boulder Valley, whether that be transportation issues or land use issues. It's really seen as, as best practice for us to engage in those types of regional efforts. And this tool, the Boulder Valley Comp Plan and the Intergovernmental Agreement that we have with the county has, has really been that mechanism for us to continue conversations in regional planning efforts that, again, extend beyond our city boundaries.
But couldn't we have the IGA without all this city-county structure in the Comp Plan, per se?
We are lining up. Hello, Planning Board. Christopher Johnson, Comprehensive Planning Manager. I appreciate the question. And, and, you know, short answer is yes. The, the Intergovernmental Agreement at every major update, that Intergovernmental Agreement is, is re-upped and re-signed by both city and counties. And so certainly, there could be changes that modify the way that that dynamic works or that interaction and the responsibilities of both of the parties as part of the, as part of the IGA. I'd like to go back and speak just a little bit to your question around sort of the value of having the county be part of this conversation and part of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan process. And I will say that that has evolved over time. So in those early days, in the, in the late '70s and through the '80s, it was a four-body review for essentially everything. So, you know, any changes to the comprehensive plan required that four-body review. That has changed over time to now, you know, decisions that are within the service area. So obviously, within the city limits, but also within the Area 2 areas. Those are essentially just city decisions that come to you as Planning Board and City Council. The county's not involved in those decisions any longer. And so that, that dynamic and the responsibilities of each group have changed over time. As, as this is a major update, the conversations around what is defined as Area 2, what areas are defined as Area 3, those are open for discussion. And so I think there still is a tremendous value that it is a joint process and that there is the ability for both the city and county to weigh in on those, on those decisions as opposed to being one side or the other. You know, having all the chips on, on their side and being able to have those conversations without the other. And so I think, you know, even though a lot of the open space has been purchased by the city and a lot of the, you know, the, the major moves have been decided, there's still a lot of nuance around the edges of the city where I think there's still a lot of value to having both city and county at the table for those conversations. Brad, I don't know if you...
I have more. So my colleagues have given great answers, and I would encourage thinking about those. And I'll add one more. Generally, I don't like to frame answers as fear-based, but I think it's important to reflect on the fact that we live at a point in history where general consensus with values have been shared with the county politic and citizens for many decades now. Obviously, variation here and there. But values of centralization of urban services and preserving mountain backdrops and, you know, these types of things have been really part of the legacy of these, of the community valley for many, many decades. In the abstract, it, it could not necessarily be that way moving forward. And there could be a change without a plan like this that precipitated a situation where 500 acres were under a single ownership in an incorporated county outside of the open space areas, where a new town were developed using a metropolitan district and county subdivision regulations, if, you know, if they were to so desire, and we didn't have such a plan as this. And while that seems maybe abstract and far-flung today, I can tell you that is happening up and down the Front Range today and has for 20 years. I myself have been involved in just such a plan proposed. There are mechanisms in place to do that. So I personally think, for all the reasons that, that the other three mentioned and for what I'm adding, that there is not only benefit in the legacy of the plan, but the practicality of it. And I would add, too, there are reasons that planning departments look at it as a model, because that type of hand-in-glove interjurisdictional cooperation is very rare. You certainly see counties and cities working together on comprehensive plans and consulting with each other, but actually going to the step of having it be a shared document that they agree on represents a high level of collaboration and diplomacy that's unseen in most parts of the country and envied, frankly, by many.
Great. Thank you.
If it's all right with Laura and George, I'm going to call on myself just to follow up specifically on Kurt's question. And Brad, don't go away, because I think there, you might. So, and again, I asked this not like, because I didn't hear the answers, but it's, it is so intriguing and interesting and not just like intellectual gymnastics, but it does, I've been questioning, well, and people have questioned me about the Comp Plan update. Well, okay, so Boulder works joint, the city of Boulder works jointly with Boulder County. And today, we, for me, I learned that, okay, state mandate says if you're a town above 2,000 in population, you have to have a comprehensive plan. So I have had people advocate to me that Longmont, Lafayette, Lewisville should be part of the BVCP. I don't advocate for that, but, and then if it's above 2,000, well, then the Town of Lyons would fall into that. Maybe they could form the L Coalition and take everything over. But why is it the city of Boulder and Boulder County, and do the L towns have something similar? Or are they doing their own comprehensive plans?
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, that's a great question. So there exists something, and I am not going to get the, the entire name right, so I'm going to call it, what is it? It is colloquially, colloquially known as the Super IGA, which is an Intergovernmental Agreement between the county and all... and all of those other towns that you have referenced, Lafayette, Louisville, Lyons, Nederland, Boulder is a party to the Super IGA as well. Essentially, that stood for 20 years, and that was essentially an agreement between all of the municipalities within the county to agree to the concepts of rural preservation and focusing growth internal to those cities and where urban services were provided. Each of those locations does have their own individual comprehensive plans for their cities. I'm not, you know, exactly sure of the relationship that they have in terms of, you know, their comprehensive plan to the county and that kind of thing. But in particular, Boulder and the city of Boulder and Boulder County's relationship, and really, the geography of the Boulder Valley is what defined why we have that relationship with the county, and also partly why those other communities are not included, because they fall just outside, you know, the defined boundary, planning boundary for the Boulder Valley, as it's currently defined. The Boulder County Comprehensive Plan does cover the entirety of the county and really includes all of those unincorporated areas surrounding those other municipalities. And just another quick side note, in terms of state legislation, a similar requirement for counties that have populations of greater than 100,000 people, they are also required to have a comprehensive plan. So, that's partly why the county has its own standalone comprehensive plan that covers the entirety of the unincorporated lands within the county. And then, we have the Boulder Valley that really, you know, defines and shares our subset geography within that larger county area.
Okay. Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, maybe I'll just add to that, too. One of the criticisms in the literature and academia of comprehensive plans is that they're based, as everybody understands, on geopolitical lines. And, you know, it is often observed that things like air and water and animals, not to mention people, and traffic, don't observe geopolitical boundaries. And there is a school of thought that says planning should be done regionally and should be based on natural constraints. And that's very hard to administer in practice, because jurisdictions are where, you know, the administrative authority lies. But the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan is based on the valley, and so, it really does have its origins in what is seen as a preferred planning methodology of being geographically defined. And so, while there are many ways that you could, of course, slice that, you could go up into watershed, you could go into commuter sheds, you know, a million different ways, there is a certain logic that is meaningful in terms of using the geography defined as the valley. And Christopher identified, I think, very smartly, the relationship with the Super IG and some of those other mechanisms. I would say, too, that to try to do a comprehensive plan with eight jurisdictions would be a feat unmatched. So, you know, we do want to make sure that our reach doesn't exceed our grasp, I would say.
Okay, follow on on the logistics of approval. So, we have this four-body approval. But what I heard just a little bit ago during the presentation was that there are parts of the BVCP that are city-specific. So, are those parts exclusive to the approval process of Planning Board and City Council, the parts that refer to the city alone?
They are, they are able to be amended by Planning Board and City Council alone. So, the overall update to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan will be required to be adopted by all four bodies. But if there are amendments or changes in the future, there are timeframes and periods in which those amendments can be made. And anything that is within the service area, those are specific just to the two-body review with Planning Board and City Council.
And is the approval process similar to what we experienced with the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, i.e., there is no approval until, in this case, the four bodies approve exactly word-for-word the same document? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. So, we anticipate a lot of coordination and some joint sessions with both city and county decision-makers to make sure that we're trying to get ahead of those, kind of the minutia of amendments and changes that can occur late in the process. So, that's something we are well aware of and working diligently to make sure that we can plan ahead for that and try to minimize some of those conflicts towards the end.
Okay, I have a couple more questions, but Laura, George, let's give you guys a chance, and maybe you'll ask the same things. If you guys have any questions? Nope, good?
No, I don't either, so...
Okay, all right, fine, I'll carry on for a moment. Early on, Chris, you pointed out that the distinction between land use and zoning. And you mentioned that zoning involves property rights. So, I want to make sure I understand, what are the limitations to changing zoning in this, you know, the plan drives land use, land use drives zoning? What are the limitations to changing zoning with and without property owners' consent? And so, because Boulder has, we have sometimes done some things that have resulted, both the city and the county, that have resulted in lawsuits and struggles and angst where we change zoning, down-zoning, up, you know, things that were done maybe in compliance with plans, but not necessarily in, you know, historical, the historical context of the property, or what the property owner deemed as their development right. So, can you talk a little bit about the land use versus zoning, and what our ability is to change zoning without property owners' agreement and consent?
I'm actually gonna look to our city attorney or our director to answer that question. It's a great question, I just want to be careful about how we answer it.
Okay.
Yeah, it is a good question, and it's a sensitive topic. And, you know, I would start that by saying that, you know, zoning is, you know, is a property right, it runs, you know, essentially runs with the land. And oftentimes, you know, the property owner will make decisions based on that. And I will say that while people generally don't like things being done to them, and that's partly why it becomes very controversial, the city does maintain the right to legislatively change zoning without a property owner's consent. That is, if I remember correctly, it's just part of the police powers of the city to be able to regulate, you know, the city, the lands that are within the city as they see fit. We, of course, also have very specific rezoning criteria. So, if it is an applicant-requested change, it has to meet very specific rezoning criteria. And obviously, the zoning request needs to be consistent with the land use that's defined within, you know, within the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. So, while that zoning is a property right, and it's seen as relatively stable, it is not a vested right that absolutely belongs to the property owner and can never be changed. That is something that is within the jurisdiction of the city to change through a legislative process.
I just wanted to add, that's, yeah, I agree with you completely. And one thing I wanted to add on there is, we do it through a legislative rezoning. You know, usually, we do legislative rezonings for a reason. Quadrature is very hard to change a zoning process. And that is partly because it allows property owners to come and speak, to be able to be heard by people, like all of you, like City Council. So, it's something that is generally done as a legislative rezoning. And that's important so that there is a chance to be heard, again, as a property right, as somebody who may be getting their zoning changed in a way that they don't appreciate. So, and if we do a rezoning, it does have to be aligned with the comp plan, aligned with the land use designations. That can be really important for us, otherwise, there could be legal challenges like spot zoning and other things, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I have one last one, and it's on a completely, oh, go ahead.
Can I follow up? Since we're talking about the relationship between land use and zoning, my understanding, I should have looked this up. My understanding is the mapping between land use designations and zoning districts is in the code, right? It's not in the comp plan. I didn't see it anywhere in the comp plan.
Right, just the map itself is in the comp plan, right, the land use map?
Right.
Yeah.
But what the mapping, from mathematical sense, which zone districts apply, or, yeah, are subsets, I guess, of which zone districts? That's in the code.
Right, like a legislative, yeah, it was adopted by ordinance, right?
So, that could be changed kind of arbitrarily, theoretically, right?
It can't, but again, you want to make sure that it aligns with the BVCP and the land use map. Any sort of zoning needs to match that, right? And so, when you say arbitrarily, I guess, any sort of legislative change has to go through you all, through City Council, goes through public hearing process. So, it's not really arbitrary, I would say.
Yeah, sorry, that was, I'm sure, not the right word. Especially when talking to a liar. But I mean that there are no comp plan restrictions on, really, other than maybe some of the definitions that talk about the intensity limits or that sort of thing, there aren't really restrictions on, for mixed-use business, for example, there aren't really restrictions on what zone district can be classified as a compatible zone district with the mixed-use business, land use.
Right, you're saying that's a finding that we do through our ordinance process, through the code?
Right, yeah, okay, thank you, just wanted to clarify.
But I'd punt to Brad if he has additional.
Well, I think I followed that, and I think I'll just add that there is a, what do we call? Yes, the magical cheat sheet. And Chris probably has a better understanding of that. But basically, there's something that kind of maps land use to zoning district types, precisely as Laurel speaks to, which is that, you know, if there's a gray industrial color in the zoning map, the city wouldn't be able to just unilaterally, you know, make that residential, because the Comprehensive Plan would have a corresponding land use type that is diametrically opposed to that. So, that would either necessitate not making that zoning change on that, you know, changing it from gray to blue or whatever, or making a land use type map change in the Comprehensive Plan, of course, you know, concurrently. Am I accurate about the magic sheet? Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so... I'm sorry, I'm gonna roll here. Can I just add one more thing? Is, and this is a little bit of a preview, so I'm getting a little bit ahead. But we recognize that the evolution of the Comprehensive Plan, if you were to put, and Chris did, the two up there, you can see the land use typology and the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning map, and they are both very, very fine-grained. We will bring forward at a later time an observation that that's a little unusual for Comprehensive Plans to be that fine-grained, and that has evolved over the years. It's much more typical to have those land use designations be larger aggregated areas that would encompass multiple kinds of zoning types. So, you might be hearing some suggestions from us in the future about that.
Okay, great. My last question jumps to the process side of things. And you mentioned this community assembly. How many people do you anticipate being in as part of this community assembly?
From my understanding, somewhere around 50.
Five-zero?
Five-zero, some, yeah, not a firm number, but somewhere in that range.
Okay, and do you, you know, we are, I think rightly, strive to achieve equitable representation, voices that aren't usually heard, et cetera. But conversely, when we try to slice and dice people and make sure we have the right number of slices, sometimes we start putting people into narrower slices than they might be, you know, normally thought to be part of. So, do we have a plan? And how are we going to select those folks? How are we going to address the issue of representation and that sort of thing? Because it's perilous, and I don't, I'm glad that probably some consultant is doing that. But anyway, and then, at the end, these 50 people work for a year or so, lots of meetings, lots of hours, a lot of people. And yet, the actual decision comes down to council, planning board, and the county. And so, sometimes, when you develop these giant processes with a lot of people, you manage to just ultimately make a lot of people frustrated because their particular viewpoint was not adopted, and ultimately, a council that they may or may not have liked adopts a plan. So, anyway, it's partly a comment, partly a question. Do you want to elaborate a little more on this community assembly and the selection process, et cetera?
Yeah, so, a lot of this will be talked about in the August meeting. But the short answer to your first question is, yes, we have thought about it. Yes, our consultant is on it, so rest assured on that case. And we'll give you much more detail about that in the future. And then, as well as your second question, we're thinking deeply about it. And I think a big piece of this community assembly is getting buy-in from the boards in the county on taking whatever feedback is given to them seriously. Obviously, the decision is up to boards and councils, but for the community assembly to be successful, I think, taking their feedback seriously is a big piece of that. So, that's why we're introducing it so early.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that was, that's it for me. Did anyone else, anything else come to light for anybody? Were we in this, okay? Kurt, you look, you're thinking about one more.
Oh, I'm thinking about so many more. No, I'll hold off pending the next meeting. One thing, just a long-term request, very detailed, is it would be great to get, I'm a paper guy, because I'm old, I would love to get a printed version of the land use map, like where you can actually read it sometime, that we can start poring over. I mean, Brad was sort of referencing possible change in approach to that, which would be fine. But if we're going to stick with generally the current kind of approach, it would be nice to be able to really dig in on the land use map at some point. And I do that best, not on a screen, but on paper.
Okay, does staff have any final comments? Or was this helpful to you? Do you, anything that we need, we didn't ask, or we should have supplied to you that we...
No, I think this was great. I think this is exactly what we are ultimately hoping to achieve is, and hopefully, we did provide a bit of a foundational understanding of what the Boulder Valley Comp Plan is. But we're really excited to come back to you all in August and share a little bit more info around what the draft scope and schedule and process is ultimately gonna look like. There's gonna be some new issues that we're gonna tackle with this comp plan update, one of those being equity. You know, we're a lot better positioned now as a city than we were in 2015 to tackle some of those issues. We have the racial equity instrument. We have a really robust system of community connectors that we'll be engaging strongly with to help connect us to some of the more underrepresented communities that have historically... to help connect us to some of the more underrepresented communities that have historically been, you know, not as well represented in these large-scale planning processes. So we're excited to kick this thing off, to share more info with you and and really get out with our community and help shape what the future of Boulder is going to look like for the next 15 years.
Great. Well, thanks very much. So I'm going to close item 6A. And we'll move on to any matters from the board or staff that haven't been addressed tonight.
I do, I have one. I realized I didn't introduce myself on the record. I'm Laura with the city for the city attorney's office. I wanted to just briefly mention the rules of procedure. I want to thank all of you guys for all of your great comments and feedback. We're putting those together and creating a draft where we highlight each of the different feedback based on who requested it and answering all of your questions. So the goal is to have it come before you sometime in August, but it depends on availability in planning board meetings. So I wanted to let you know that that's coming forward. And and thank you all so much for your great feedback on that.
Great. Well, we look forward to those. And even though they're draft, I I have been referring to them just even as just good procedure to, anyway, I've been referring to them in the last couple of meetings to answer some questions I had about chairing and stuff. And I know they're draft. I know we haven't adopted them. But anyway, it's been helpful to me.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Yeah. And if anyone has additional things that they would like to add, feel free to email me.
Okay. Well, then, unless I hear an objection, I'm going to move to adjourn. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.